They talk. What am I gonna do about your labor? They're gonna still have an issue with that labor. I say just, you know, I should just take it off.
Yeah. I mean, it's.
And so like our expense report, duh. Here's the problem. She did it. Everything. I need more.
To do my legal level.
Any shorter. Grand Forks, right? And I said, well, can we fix that? He goes, yeah. Can we, um, void it? So you see it all in there?
Yeah.
And then all reversed and then it will all. Oh.
Yeah, I, I.
Just be messy.
You probably, if I didn't catch you before you went home, I tried to call you yesterday afternoon about four thirty as I was saying.
Let me take you off. We'll, we'll take forward it later.
Yeah.
But, um, I should call them right now.
I think.
Before he.
Just, did you hear from Stacey?
No.
I didn't hear it.
No, but I see the rest of them.
I think, I think.
Can you wait just one second while I fly downstairs?
I think I should go first.
Yeah.
I might hear.
Oh, so.
I didn't hear you too.
Yeah.
That's fine. You know, I always. We won't have. I always die of one person.
You're not, you're not controversial.
I am not.
I always thought I made plus two hours.
I'm four times.
Yeah.
I do. That's correct.
That's like me every day.
Yeah. Well, how many people come to your conference?
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly. He's got his desk.
Good morning, Trevor, Tom. And Tom Ford and the company over there. Everybody here, everybody?
Yeah.
Good morning, Dave.
Is it just Bob and I so far? Anybody else on Zoom yet?
Kimberly and Cindy.
Mark is there.
I don't see him on the screen. That's why I'm wondering.
Uh, Mark's there.
Cynthia is. Everybody's, everybody's present then?
Looks like it.
Hold up. John, John, he can't, he can't add him to, um, the bill. For all, all friends, so. The ultimate. Hi, John. Say, don't add Tom's labor to that chat. Don't approve, don't finish it till I get downstairs, okay? All right. Very good. Thank you. Bye.
Can you guys by chance hear me? I'm having a goofy moment.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Who is chair in the meeting?
Davis.
Okay, I'm ready.
Ready to start? All right, we'll call the special meeting of the, uh, Grand Forks County Commission to Order. Um, apparently all commissioners are present. Some of us are on Zoom. Uh, but, uh, we will proceed. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is to, uh, consider some new information that has come to us in the matter of the special use permit for Vantas to place a radar tower in Grand Forks County. So, uh, at this point, I guess, uh, I'll turn it to Mr. Ford. And he can kind of brief us on what he has uncovered. I guess he's, uh, over by the TV set apparently, so.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I was trying to turn up the TV volume. Um. Yeah, uh, yeah, sorry, Mr. Chair members of the commission, um, after, after the commission had approved the, um, Vantas special use permit to construct the tower, uh, southeast of Grand Forks. Um, there was just some other questions that came to light such as the, what will be the eventual radius of the radar, and I believe it's a BB loss radar, uh, and the potential to thirty miles, which, um, when I talked with, uh, Grand Forks Air Force Base leadership, there was some concern with that. Uh, and then, um, also the, uh, a, a, a company that named Hermes would be involved, which is, which is out of Denmark. So, that, that did drive some extra questions. I've been, um, communicating very, very frequently with, um, Trevor Woods, who's the executive director of the Northern Plains UAS test site. And Vantas falls under, uh, Mr. Woods and, and his, his team. Um, so we've been communicating a lot, been conveying these, these concerns to him. He's with us today and he's definitely willing to answer questions that the commission may have or does have, and he does have some further information to share with the commission as well. Um, but I, I think at, at this point, um, the, the two main concerns that have presented themselves is the radius of the eventual radar. And then, uh, the fact that there is a foreign, um, company involved in the technology. And I'll just stop there for any questions.
I, I don't hear any questions. So, Mr. Woods, would you like to speak to this at the moment?
Yes, please. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Ford and Commissioners. Um, yeah, I, uh, you know, I'll acknowledge upfront, we are probably a little bit premature in, uh, putting this application in without appropriately socializing it with the, uh, with, with the appropriate stakeholders on the front end of this. And so our lessons learned, you know, we, we made that mistake. We won't do that one again. Um, as we've been discussing, you know, with, with Mr. Ford, um, you know, one of the things that we just wanted to make very clear is that, uh, the, the request of this permit is actually in the erection of the tower itself and not of the radar. Uh, but I, I do acknowledge and, and understand it's the county's prerogative to understand what, you know, this tower is going to be used for, what its land is going to be used for, of which we have no problem discussing and analyzing that. Um, the, the purpose of this request and, and trying to retain this permit is that, um, in order for us to actually install a radar that will enable beyond visual line of sight, uh, we actually have to go through a federal process of review and approval, which is, uh, owned by the Federal Communication, uh, Commission. And they also cross coordinate with the National Telecommunication and Information Administration, also called the NTIA. The NTIA is actually the authority of all federal and government spectrum to include the Department of Defense. And so what will happen if this, uh, permit remains in place and we erect this tower is we will begin a process of which we make a request to the FCC who will cross coordinate with the NTIA, and it is part of their process in which to reach out, invoke all stakeholders who, who have, uh, um, you know, stake in this approval or, or, uh, you know, determination of whatever they may come up with, which would include the Grand Forks Air Force Base. It is our plan that prior to really seeing that process, uh, realized fully, we will, you know, preemptively work through socializing with Colonel Monroe and his team, the Air Force Base and, and the tenants of Grand Sky, Grand Sky developers, uh, as well, to make sure that everybody knows and understands what we are trying to do, how the information is going to be handled, uh, you know, who's going to be touching that information. Uh, that process still needs to unfold, but before we can actually make that request to the federal government, we have to have, uh, a assurance of the location where that radar is going to be located, and that assurance is coming through this permit, allowing the tower to be erected. So that, that is what we are asking the county to do is to, you know, retain the permit so that we have the ability to start the federal process to make the request. Um, you know, we won't, obviously, uh, we're, we're not going to do anything that, um, you know, the county doesn't want us to do. If the county wants additional time to evaluate what this is all about, we're happy to do that, but we just wanted to make sure that it was very clear that, uh, what, what we're trying to do with this permit, it does not actually approve a radar to be installed and broadcast. That is actually done by the federal government via FCC and NTIA. So with that, I'll, I'll stop. I do have some other members of my team available if there's additional technical questions, um, including the person from Talis who is, uh, more of an expert in spectrum than I will ever be. So if there is, uh, you know, questions or details of how the federal process works, I'm not probably the right one for that, but I, I have folks with me today that can, uh, assist with that. So thank you for your time.
I have one question that you could probably answer. Who will, who's actually going to sign the lease with the farmer? On that, that, on the space, on the, on, in his field?
Yeah, it's a good question, and, um, I, I think I have the right answer. Aaron Raisler, my deputy director, will correct me if I'm wrong here, but the Northern Plains UAS test site via the University of North Dakota, since they are a contract authority, will be the signature to the, to the lease arrangement with the landowner.
Okay. And so, but what, what are the, what are the names of the companies that we might have to be considered, uh, considering as foreign national, or foreign countries?
That, yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, good question. So we have a, uh, our, our system integrator and technical partner is a company called Talis USA, which is their US-based subsidiary. Their parent corporation is, is headquartered in, in France. Um, Talis is, uh, a technology and solutions provider for, uh, a large amount of the airspace system of the world. And so they do a lot of work in terms of surveillance of, uh, aircraft operating in the skies and providing that information to air traffic management. Um, they also have a level of those systems in place, uh, inside the, the United States. And so I'm not an expert on their specific business and, and the, the details of it, but the, uh, company that we are in a contractual relationship is the US subsidiary of Talis. Um, Talis then, uh, surveys the market for what are the radars that are available that can meet the FCC broadcast requirements for aeronautical navigation. It's called Part eighty-seven. Um, these are the radars that the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, will only allow for use of what we call detect and avoid, which enables beyond visual line of sight flight. One of those radars is a company, Tirma, which is, um, out of, uh, the Netherlands, and I'm not, you know, intricately detailed in, in understanding exactly what that company is, but it is my understanding that their radars are operational elsewhere in the US and in the world. Uh, in fact, two of them are operating in North Dakota as part of our key site out near Williston and Watford City. Um, and so they have, uh, you know, they've, they've gone through the appropriate process to bring that inside the United States and, and make that be part of this process. Um, with that, I see Erin has raised her hand. She can probably supplement some of this information. So, uh, Erin, would you?
Yeah, the one additional detail I would like to add with, with Tirma and actually in particular, this, uh, exact piece of technology and why it was important for, you know, the, the Northern Plains UAS site representative of the state are to go to select the, the Tirma radar is because this is a similar radar that it versus the same radar that is utilized by the DOD today for a lot of their missions and operations. And so recognizing that this is not a, you know, both Talis and Tirma are federally recognized at the DOD level and are operating, uh, technologies and equipment. In Tirma's case, the exact same equipment on behalf of, uh, the DOD today. So from the security concern aspects of this being a foreign entity, uh, it has already been well vetted and it has not raised concerns for the DOD to date.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do have a question, um, relative to the land in Allen Township. Is it close to a farmstead?
Mr. Magnuson will address that.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Peach, I, uh, it's not directly close to anything. Um, I'd have to get you a specific distance. Um, I would say at minimum, uh, quarter, or quarter mile, maybe a little bit more.
Okay, and has the township had approval of this placement of the tower?
Ah, yes, we've notified at every landowner within half mile of this parcel. Uh, they've got a public hearing notice. And yes, the township did recommend approval of their request.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions by commissioners so far?
Yeah, I, I've got kind of a bird's eye view question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, just speaking in general terms, I suppose this is a question for probably both Trevor and Tom and Colonel Monroe. Um, solutions, a solution-minded question. Is, is there something that we can arrive at that satisfies each party? Um, and I know that, uh, Mr. Sawyer and myself spoke a little bit about, um, a shield of some sort of physical barrier that would, um, cover Grand Sky and the Grand Forks Air Force Base from the ability of this radar to detect potential testing that goes on at Grand Sky and anything to do with the Air Force Base. Um, because I think that's where the concerns lie. And so I'm wondering, is there an appetite at, with Vantas and Talis to meet these concerns head on and kind of work almost in partnership with Grand Sky and the Air Force Base so that they can do their project and Grand Sky and the Air Force Base can have their concerns alleviated?
Would like to respond.
Uh, I can, Mr. Chair, um, I can speak to that from a county point of view. I, I've, Miss, Mr. Woods has been, um, has made, has taken every phone call I've, I've uh, made in the last two days. He's, and, and the test site, let me point out that the test site is a partner of the county. They're a partner of Grand Sky. Um, and they've been good to work with. They're a pro, they're an integral partner on Project Ultra. Um, you know, Mr. Woods and I have talked about exactly that, Commissioner Rusted. And, um, he's already proposed to me and Mr. Sawyer, uh, a list of names that would come together to do exactly that, to talk with, that does include the airbase leadership to talk through some mitigation solutions, because, uh, the, I mean, obviously the base had that, that one specific concern, but they are definitely open to talking and finding, uh, palatable solutions for everyone. Not speaking for the test site or Grand Sky, but we are having those discussions.
Yeah, your chair.
Go ahead.
I, uh, uh, appreciate the comments, uh, Mr. Ford, and, and he's absolutely right. Um, you know, we, we are definitely are open to and, and will work with the local stakeholders who, uh, you know, this, uh, this could, you know, have interest in. And so we, we want to collaborate, you know, we are a member of the state of North Dakota and it doesn't serve us well to, um, you know, do things and, and do it in a way that, that doesn't involve the, the community and, and the, in the stakeholders. And so we are committed to doing that. Um, that, that process of which Mr. Ford outlined will be part of the process in terms of how we go about getting federal approval. And so that, that will happen. Um, and, and, you know, that is, we, we will commit to that, that that's what we're going to do.
I have a question, and I'm not sure who I'm asking it of. But, um, is there a scenario in which the FCC process would be completed and the radar would be given the thumbs up without Grand Sky or the Air Force Base's approval? Because I mean, I think that's kind of the biggest concern in my mind's eye at this time is, you know, do they say, yeah, go ahead and do it without the other stakeholders is, uh, uh, I guess, a signature of approval?
Commissioner Rustad, it is, um, my understanding that it cannot be approved without the FCC and NTIA going through the appropriate processes, which includes notification and solicitation of input from all the stakeholders in the geographical region of which the request is being made for. Um, that being said, I, you know, if there is additional detail to provide, and I'd invite, uh, Ian Joyce, uh, or Aaron, uh, Raisler, if, if there's additional comments to that.
And a slightly different question, isn't this one that falls squarely in the uh, committee on foreign investment in the United States for CFIUS? Would they not, not have to sign off on this with any potential foreign investment, even though these, these countries are NATO allies?
I, Mr. Chair, I can answer that. Um, so because Grand Forks Air Force Base is now ha- now has that special designation, um, it is within the CFIUS jurisdiction. Now, that said, and, and keep in mind, we're all still learning what CFIUS is. We never, no one had heard of it till a few years ago, and there still isn't a lot of clear direction. Um, but, um, the Office of Foreign Investments, the, the DOD in this case, they cannot, they cannot force, uh, like Tirma to file CFIUS. Um, it, it, the commission, the commission can make that contingent on the special use permit approval, asking, um, the radar supplier, Tirma, to submit to CFIUS. Um, just a reminder, the, they have forty-five, they being CFIUS committee has forty-five days to respond. Um, and there could be multiple responses. It could be this isn't, this doesn't concern us. Um, it could be we have some concerns. Here's how to mitigate them, or they might come back and say th- this is a bad actor, right? Um, but it is to, uh, information that I've even found out this morning is Tirma is, um, a supplier to US, to US military and Coast Guard as well. So that is an important distinction. But it is, at the end of the day, the county can make it, um, can request it as part of the special use permit approval. But now that would be a commission decision.
Right. And Mr. Sawyer, you haven't, uh, spoken up. Have you got any questions or comments you'd like to make?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and, and members of the commission. Um, I, I, to my understanding of all this, I don't believe a foreign entity is going to own anything here. I believe foreign equipment, foreign-produced equipment, the Tirma radar in particular, um, is being purchased, but will be owned by the test site and/or the University of North Dakota. However, that contracting structure works. Um, and so I don't believe from my understanding of CFIUS, not a lawyer or an expert on it, but I don't know, um, I, you can always ask the question, of course, but I don't think that really plays here. Um, I have done some research on the Tirma radar. It is a rock-solid system with a rock-solid company um, that does sell, uh, parts, pieces and equipment to the United States of America, to the Department of Defense. So I feel pretty good about that. Um, however, it still bears, you know, consideration and looking into just to be completely satisfied. Um, I also would say that, um, overall, this entire project, the entire concept is important for, uh, the growth of the drone industry. It's important for, um, emergency management. This can open up a whole new area. Um, Grand Forks would be the leader again um, in an area in the UAS industry. Um, and I think that while I certainly personally have some concerns about the pattern of life tracking capability this radar has, I think the commission should um, approve the test site to continue forward. But I don't know if that means just put the permit for construction on hold while more information is shared, or if it's, you can keep your permit and keep planning, because I think if I understood Trevor correctly, for the test site to even be able to apply to FCC and NTIA and the other entities, they need to be able to say, we have this spot approved. So perhaps the path forward here is to keep the approval, um, and maybe make it conditional on coming back and talking about what's going on every three months or something like that while this process unfolds.
I see Mr. Wood is nodding to all of that. And of course, your, your communication with the county and with Grand Sky and the base is always top-notch anyway. Um, I guess, uh, any, any comments from commissioners? Uh, I'm kind of leaning toward allowing them to go ahead and, uh, keep the permanent process, knowing that if we have to stop it at some point, we do have, will have that authority. But I'm not sure we need to do it right now. Any thoughts?
Trevor has his hand up, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rustad and members of the commission. Yeah, I, I, uh, appreciate the words, uh, Tom Sawyer. And, uh, and yeah, he's absolutely right. I think there would be absolutely no concern on our part to ensure that we're keeping this commission and, and stakeholders informed as to the process of which we are following. Uh, in fact, that will be good for, in general, just so everybody kind of knows what this looks like. Um, and so, uh, happy to do that. We're happy to commit to that, you know, I, as part of routine business or however you see fit. Um, we are more than happy to ensure everyone is informed as to progress and, uh, communication that is occurring with regard to the use of this tower.
Thank you. Um, any other comments from commissioners or from, uh, Mr. Ford or any other questions that haven't been answered? We can't answer all the questions yet, but that, if you keep us informed as we go forward, I guess that's how we, uh, how we get there.
Well, considering my, let's call it limited knowledge of radars, um, I'm comfortable if the Air Force Base and Grand Sky is comfortable. That's, that's kind of where I'm at. If all parties are shaking hands and saying this is going to work, okay, then great. But if we've got, um, competing interests and potential security risks, then I'm, I'm not as comfortable. So, but also I'm speaking as such a novice. I mean, I'm, it's like I'm a two-year-old in this conversation because I can hardly understand the, the, the jargon that's being used. So I just want to do what's best for all parties.
Question from Mr. Ford. Uh, what, you, you've had, uh, more than a few discussions already with representatives of the airbase. How do you see this, uh, at the moment?
Uh, in, in visiting with, um, the base commander and vice, um, it, they're, they are open to discussions. They're open to meetings and they're open to finding a way to yes. Um, and so I, I think to your point, Mr. Chair on the communication, um, Mr. Woods graciously offered for me to be part of these conversations and these stakeholder meetings. So um, I know just enough to be dangerous, but, um, the, the fact that the, the county will be in the conversations, I think that, that, that makes me feel comfortable. Um, and as I'm with Commissioner Rustad, I think we, the county's always said, do no harm, uh, to the base. And so the base is not digging in their heels. They're not saying stop. They're saying, let's talk. Uh, I'm comfortable with that.
All right. Given what I'm hearing, I, I don't see that there's any action we need to take.
Mr. Magnuson would like to make a comment.
Okay, sure.
I'm, Mr. Chair, based on what I'm hearing, um, sounds like we want to move forward, but want to make sure that we get input from the base, Grand Sky and so forth. I would recommend that we amend our approval, which would allow them to continue. Uh, the, with one condition, uh, just add a condition that FCC and Department of Justice, or Department of Defense, uh, uh, approval is required prior to the radar being installed. That way all the stakeholders get their input. Everybody understands what's going on. And they're still allowing them forward.
All right. Mr. Swer.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Magnus. That's, I, I think the spirit of your, um, your, uh, request there is for appropriate stakeholders to be, um, informed. I don't know if DOJ has a role in this, and if they don't, and that forces Trevor and the team to have to go to the Department of Justice to say they have no role, that could be months. Perhaps it's really just Grand Sky and Grand Forks Air Force Base that need to sign off. I don't mean to step on your motion or your suggestion, Mr. Magnuson, but it's.
No, no, I misspoke. I meant, uh, Department of Defense.
Department of Defense, okay.
I thought you said DOD.
Oh, I thought you said DOJ.
Do you see a DOD? Well, is that what you said, Lane?
I, I said DOJ first and then I corrected and said Department of Defense, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, Ian Joyce has raised his hand and is familiar with, uh, spectrum approval processes that I think are to, to, to Mr. Sore's point, in the spirit of what Mr. Magnuson's looking for.
Right. So would we say appropriate, uh, uh, stakeholders or do we name anybody? If, if, if we just, I would just be asking for a motion to make sure that this is included in the permit process. Uh, so how, how would you word that as, uh, including the FTC and DOD or all appropriate stakeholders, including Grand Sky and the, and the airbase?
Well, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, but, uh, the FCC approval would, would require all stakeholders to be involved. And I would just be specifying, um, DOD just to make sure that that's, that's on there also.
All right. Any further comments? Is someone willing to make a motion to that effect if we can word it?
Chair, Mr. Chair, I would make that motion that, um, with Mr. Magnuson talked. that um, with Mr. Magnuson talked about, I think uh, we should proceed making sure that uh, all stakeholders are involved. Uh, and that uh, uh, we get FCC approval before anything moves on.
Commissioner Ross, can I make an amendment to your motion?
Sure.
Could I amend it to say that there would be a uh, mandatory update and check in every so often, maybe every two to three months? So that we're all on the same page, um, so that, you know, we're aware that Grand Sky, Grand Forks Air Force Base and Talus are all um, three on the same page throughout the process? Was that, is that acceptable to you, Commissioner Rust?
Yeah, I think so. That'd be great.
Well, uh, it's kind of solved by the fact that the county's going to be included in the discussions as we go forward too, so uh, I think, I think the communication will be more, more often than two to three months anyway. Right?
Mr. Chair, uh, if, can I ask, uh, Ian Joyce has had his hand raised, and I know he's um, um, very involved in the spectrum approval process. Would you mind allowing him to speak?
Very good. Go ahead.
Thanks, Trevor. Uh, thanks, Mr. Commissioner. Um, yeah, that, just to put everyone's mind at ease, um, before we turn this radar on, it has to go through the FCC approval process. So as far as radiating over anybody's land, you know, before this thing is turned on, that that's, that's not going to happen. Um, the part of the FCC, the FCC is a federal process. So they will involve all the necessary stakeholders, um, and they will make, make sure that you are not um, infringing on any sort of uh, protected use spectrums or anything else that's in that area. So I just wanted you to know that it, it already is a prerequisite of turning this radar on, um, that we get this FCC license, the FCC transmit license. And that was it. Thank you.
So that was a good point by Mr. Magnuson, but I I think that uh, maybe that obviates the need for a motion. Any thoughts?
So I think, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, okay, uh, from Ms. Wong said, I think you have to make a motion to amend your previous motion made on Tuesday. Uh, so I I don't know if you're making a motion to uh, but in other words, is all the Tuesday motion, or is it just a motion to amend?
Well, it would be a motion to amend if we need it. Yes.
And that, that would be part of my original motion to amend what we did last week, so uh, to include uh, those facts that uh, uh, we move forward and uh, that we uh, get FCC approval. Um, and then uh, make sure all the stakeholders are involved in this thing, so.
Well, there is a motion on the floor then, and uh, I haven't heard a second.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
Right. And as far as uh, additional discussion, just a question to Mr. Woods and Mr. Sawyer or in your teams. Is there, is there anything objectionable about this minor amendment to the approval that was granted on Tuesday?
Mr. Chairman, um, from, this is Tom Sawyer, and from Grand Sky, there's no objection from us.
All right, Mr. Wood.
Chair, members of the commission, no objection in um, ensuring all stakeholders are appropriately informed, and as Ian has already stated, as part of the FCC process, uh, we can't do anything with the radar till it's approved by the FCC, so we support.
All right, well, maybe it's a superfluous mo- motion, but uh, hearing no other discussion, Mr. Mr. Ford, anything to add?
But I know, sir, I have nothing.
All right.
Chair, I do have a question.
All right.
Since this radar is going to be located in Allen Township, and many of our egg producers um, are utilizing different uh, different systems within their, their farm. It's, this radar isn't going to have any impact on any of our agricultural systems, is it?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, that that starts to uh, get into the area of where the federal process um, starts to evaluate that. So that's exactly what they will do, is when you make a request to emit at certain frequencies or spectrums, uh, part of that process is to evaluate the location in which that emission is going to happen and uh, look for areas where they know conflict or interference may occur. That is about the depth of my knowledge, though I'd invite Ian Joyce to uh, elaborate.
Go ahead, if you have anything to offer.
Yeah, so it 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 basically just uh, I I would go back to what I said before, that that part of this FCC process is to ensure that there is no, it, that it does not infringe on any of the other um, transmit licenses that are in the area. Um, the FCC, any, any of those agricultural operations that are using um, devices that um, emit um, microwave energy uh, that requires a license, they will, they will check to, they will do a uh, a study to ensure that we are not infringing with, on any of their operations. So, yeah, that, that will, that will definitely be covered as part of the FCC approval process.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right, well, thank you to everybody who showed up, the, your team and everybody, because I think we have learned a, a lot about the whole thing that makes me feel a lot more comfortable about where we are, even though it came up kind of quickly in a meeting on Tuesday. So uh, uh, we have a motion on the floor, and I'll call for a vote, since we're on Zoom, a roll call vote, please. Start with uh, Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Peach?
Yes.
Mr. Rusted?
One point of clarification before I vote, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Is is, is my amendment I added to Chairman, or excuse me, to Commissioner Ross's um, original motion? A part of this, was that accepted? So that there would be, you know, every couple of months, an on the record review?
Well, that's kind of indefinite. Uh, if we're gonna, we should put a time limit on that, uh, if we're gonna have it, but we're also gonna have county involved in all the discussions, so I'm not sure it's necessary.
So, I mean, I guess we'll go on good faith that that's what's gonna take place, so I'm a yes.
All right. And Mr. Hagan?
I'm the yes, as well, as well.
All right, and uh, I'm, I'll vote yes as well, so uh, that's passed. And I think we've got a good path forward, in my view, to making this work out.
Mr. Chair, um, State Attorney Womsted would make, like to make a comment.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, just for clarification, um, to Commissioner Rusted's question, I believe uh, Commissioner Ross did amend his motion, so those conditions that uh, Commissioner Rusted suggested were included.
Uh, all right.
Yeah, we'll be able to meet those conditions. I mean, well, like I said, uh, the test site, they're, they're a good partner of the county, and I'll, I'll be sure to invite Mr. Woods to a commission meeting now and again.
See, I just don't want to stop getting invited to play golf with Colonel Monroe.
All right, uh, sorry, folks, my office, my phone went out. I guess, is there any other further business? But that's the only issue we have on the special meeting.
No, Mr. Chair, uh, there is approval of a language and interpretation service contract that uh, uh, is before the commission also.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, uh, we do marriage license in our department, and we have found that lately we've had quite a few non-English speaking customers. And it's, it normally takes ten to fifteen minutes to do a marriage license, and with non-English speaking people that don't bring anybody with them that speak English, it's taking us about an hour and a half via Google Translate or some other app on our phones. And I asked the question to the department heads, and they told me about Propio, which is an interpretation service or translation service that you pick basically the language, and then you're on the phone with them, and they can interpret for you. And the correctional center uses it, and the human service zone uses it, and I, from what I hear, everybody likes it. I didn't bring a copy of the contract, because at the time, Ms. Womsted and I were reviewing it and had a couple of questions, and they needed to update it, and then at nine twelve this morning, I believe they did finally get it to Ms. Womsted, and she and I are good with it. And I can get copies of that to all of you if you'd like to see it. And then we would like your support, so that I can use that to better you more efficiently serve the customers and help our office get through those faster.
Well, well, uh, was this noticed for today's meeting?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
All right, I did, I was talking to Mr. Ford, and I guess I didn't really notice myself, so um,
Mr. Chair, this is Kimberly, just really quick, I was the one who requested to get it added yesterday. I had a conversation with Amber. And she had gone through what she just described to you guys about it, kind of making um, taking a little bit longer, and this would help speed the process up and serve these customers faster. And that's when I, you know, I think it's a great idea, especially if other departments are already using it, but I also wanted to have that conversation with this mom set to make sure they're reviewing the contract, and if it's okay with Amber and this mom said, I, I have no issue with it.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, I have reviewed the latest version that came in this morning um, and have no legal concerns. I think all we would need is a motion to um, authorize Ms. Gooditis to sign the agreement if the board felt that was appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
And a second, uh, any had further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Apparently none. All right.
Thank you.
Is there any further business?
No, I think Kimberly's on deck.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Well.
Oh, was I too quick? Motion to adjourn, I think Rustad's already seconded. We, we're already out of here.
I seconded, I seconded that motion before uh, before Trevor even began to speak.
All right. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Passed, and we are adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer, and whoever else have left on the Zoom this morning.
Have a great weekend.
Bye.